The first item on our agenda is an open meeting for public comment.
Got it lined up. And zoomed in. You got it zoomed in. Just the way you had it.
Download the. The regulation. Got a public hearing, open for public, I'm ready to do it. Sorry. What I'm doing inside, these are regulations that are drafted in another town. And we'll just talk about it. It may. See if they want to adopt regulations by December. Yes. Yeah, you're. You're out soon. Anybody else? Oh, pardon me. So I should be to ask for his own request. So, um, but. Y'all can just see the other factors or anything that y'all want to talk about or any more possibilities, so.
I don't know.
Good. Hey, you want to do? Got another one. Well, we don't want to let it make. Uh, I was just. Uh, I was just trying to share it. I'm not, I'm not telling. They're right for me today. I'm not, I've got the whole week. So, we're sure. Download. For music, next month, tomorrow, into the March meeting, so we can. Do a meeting on that, have a special follow up. What would I want you to do? Sorry. First, we're done. Yes. That's your treat. Um, and so, same law, that's the same law, and I'm sorry, but all I just. So, every. You don't have to spot it. Sometimes I get that already, don't get to see it, but, uh, but like, so. How long people speak, or areas.
Yeah.
Six o'clock. We have at six o'clock, I'd like to go ahead and start it as a bottle.
Did it come on for you?
Ma'am? I hit. Yeah, the red button, it works really good when you hit the button.
I'll be on red power as well.
Okay. Uh, well, there's three items on them before we have to actually call for four. So, the first item on our agenda is an open meeting for public comment. This is where, um, any general questions that are not on the agenda needs to be brought up. If you don't have, if anybody has any items to bring up, this is the event down, if you're not already on the agenda. The second item on the agenda is, is, uh, an open public hearing for re-adopting subdivision regulations, which we've been, it's been a long process. And the third item would just be close to public hearing for those subdivision regulations. So, open meeting for public comments is what I'm doing right now. If anybody has any comments or statements that we'd like to make before we move on. Now's the time. That would be enough. So, now, then the next item, as I indicated, open public hearing for re-adopting subdivision regulations.
So, so the adoption of subdivision regulations.
So, is this one? Oh, hello. So, re-adopting of subdivision regulations. Rockland has subdivision regulations adopted currently, but they're very, very dated. They're very old. When you open the file of work, on a murder, you'll see symbols and things that don't even, uh, that's very hard to read. It's probably done several years ago, and that's for the other payment. So, what we've done largely is take the subdivision regulations, they're adopted in the neighborhood, the city monitor. And, um, since we have a safety plan, we have a safety engineer, uh, and we started developing those. To put those first part of the plan, which is draft, and now we're, um, putting it up for adoption. This is, this has to have a 30-day public hearing notice, and it's adopted by the plan. These subdivision regulations are not adopted by the board, they are all, they're only adopted by the planning commission, that's same law. So, this point two, this subdivision regulations there, and what it is for the public is, when somebody comes in and wants to do a subdivision, uh, either a two block subdivision, just maybe I have 10 acres, I'm cutting off one acre for my son or something, that's subdivision flat. Uh, but, but also if they're really coming in doing 40 lots, or 100 lots, or 400 lots. Somebody needs to regulations those developers will have to follow. And I think it's very urgent to get these adopted, because right now we have developers that are asking to see our subdivision regulations. And the ones, you know, the official ones who have to give them are several years old. So, these, uh, these subdivision regulations are for decades. Decades, yes, sir. Uh, and therefore, that's our, this is in a process, I was hired as a public by the city about a year, two years ago, maybe. And we've been, we updated some ordinance, and now we're updating subdivision regulations. And so, are these perfect? Will we want to change in the future? Absolutely. We can change at any time with public hearing and a resolution to change. But I don't, I do think it's urgent to get them adopted. We can't wait. Perfect, we can get, they're good, and these are good. So, these, uh, they, just to keep you updated, uh, things underground like, will be required new subdivisions. That's, that's the new standard, kind of going forward for nice subdivisions. Um, the CBE requirements, cluster bail box, not popular. Your local post offices is going to be in all these subdivisions, having a kiosk in front. These regulations kind of dictate how those are designed and who maintains it. Um, so, um, any questions from the public or for the board?
Well, as I said, a large number of these regulations are actually bringing our code of state regulations on top of additional items to grow. And if I remember you correctly, by this public meeting, we're starting the 30 days, uh, the requirement. So that we will adopt it after the 30 days, or go through the document after the 30 days.
This eligible will be adopted, sir.
It is eligible to be adopted.
Yes.
What do you want to?
There's a very early order requirement to adopt subdivision regulations.
Okay.
With providing the other court.
Perfect. Providing the other courts. Very good. Any other comments on the re-adopting subdivision regulations?
And a lot of these things, the, 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 they're not so steep, or the details under very, um, uh, like design, like underground, like, you don't have to have underground like, but, you know, that's kind of, that's the express desire of the planning commission of the past. I think, um, you also have to, um, like sidewalks, sidewalks require new subdivisions according to each regulation. Or, uh, curbing that require some new subdivisions. This is only when they're building new roads too. You don't have to, here splitting lots on existing road, existing utilities, you're not going to have to install new sidewalks or curbing that. These are where we're building the new roads, and these are the, where we're decombiting, search those roads that I have. But basically, most of it is going to be state law, what constitutes subdivision is state law. So, it's, uh, so, 90% of the documents, they stay on here, by the way.
Right. You have any questions, Robert?
No, the thing that, that goes into the subdivision from thus far, we'll always, we would have to go back and bring the other subdivision up to that point too?
This ordinance for fields and replacements. This resolution that we have for the time, fields and replaces the subdivision regulations.
So, that's all the older subdivision.
Yeah, that is, yeah.
So, new subdivision regulations, um, would, this, this is superseded. They'll become extorted adopted at that point.
Yeah, the point is, you don't have to go back and take old stuff in and rebuild the curve to that side.
No.
Right.
No, as a matter of fact, uh, any subdivision that was approved, if we had a subdivision approved, um, tonight, for example, prior to adopting these, they would have been developed with the existing subdivision regulations, they would not be subject to any subdivision regulations that are going forward. This is only for, um, for developments that are, that come in from this point forward.
Any other? Okay, so, uh, if there are no, no other comments or questions, I'll move to the third item on our list, which is to close the public hearing for re-adopting subdivision regulations. At this point, we're going to call the planning commission, be in the board, and establish a court. Now, you're up.
Now, your second, Lieutenant Marshall. I share with you.
Here.
Secretary, Ian Bridges.
Here.
Audrey, you're salsa.
Right.
Jeremy Hayes. Brad Allen.
President.
Audrey Foreman. Will Rapper.
Here.
Right, but it was like, Mark.
Here.
I believe that it's out of the board. We need, uh, we need to, we need an motion to approve, the board is in it.
I like the vote.
Second.
I'll second.
All favor. All right. All vote. All right. Any old business that we need to address?
I don't know.
There's nothing listed, so I can make sure that nobody here heard anything. New business. Governor Finley, rezoning request.
Which was Miss Finley? You're Miss Finley? So, we, we do have the applicant here for, for this request. Um, Martin may have, um, some more information about, about this, the reason for the request, and also give the applicant a chance to speak for their rationale on the request. I've simply, uh, when I got the application, it was a request to rezone to R2, and the property is currently zoned B2, General Commercial. This is at the intersection, uh, Westwood Lawn and US Highway 51. So, this is right intersection in Westwood Lawn, par 19, tax now, agency and for Bay. The, the property, um, so what I do when I review a zoning request is I look at all the factors that go towards it, and then make a recommendation. A recommendation, just out of recommendation. If, um, y'all agree to ask questions, challenge, accept recommendation, or, or accept. So, the, this recommendation, um, so again, notice the property, when I look at a rezoning history, not part of the term spot zone around. Um, spot zone, for me, there's not really any adjacent zoning to it. If we were to rezone this property, R2, it would become the only R2 property in the immediate area. And there is R1 next to it. R1, I would be more likely to take a rezoning request at R1, I know it's residential, than what R2, due to the adjacent zoning. But also given the fact that it's at an intersection, and we're not only at an intersection, but an intersection on our, thoroughfare, uh, through town. That's kind of a commercial zone. As the planner, I would recommend that they rezone it at that intersection of R2 or B2. Any questions for the board? Or who do you want here for the applicants?
I'll agree with the applicants right now.
Very good. You're welcome.
The property used to be a public office, and we ended up coming in to, or we want it to be a multi-family. President of the presentation.
Current residents are in there right now, because there's only two actual buildings.
Right, so we would like to, maybe something, I have two, um, two that have complex, and then one to say is on the back. So, one I would say is in the, um, the pool house, and so, if I changed it, it would be for them to stay in there. Since they're renting, they're renting it now, and, um, whatever, so that, that needed to be changed to R2, or they would have to stay. And I didn't, I thought it was R1, not whatever, not the rental. Is that in rezoning, probably partnership? And so, it's actually separate buildings and a little house, so that's the amount of three buildings in it. Right?
My concern was just how many tenants was in there, and it's safety concerns with that, when you go to chomping up those buildings.
Right, so we want to make sure that it was in line.
Mars, what would all they have to do to get it possible, how many residents will we have?
Currently, the history of having been a, were safe family residents, and then converted to the doctor's office, and now they have, they want to be multifamily. We've got to ensure that meets the building fire code for multifamily residents, so fire walls, they can ingress, egress routes into those separate structures. I think the question to me now is, you said you currently have two in the one building. What, I have to use your letter, because there's obviously a construction building without inspections, so we'll have to have use your letter to certify that it meets the building fire codes.
That's not commercial property there anymore, that's, that's domestic.
We all would make a law that was changed back, and it's, you know, we sure.
How pretty is your floor, though?
Yeah. We got, we're not, we're not, we're not.
I think they were, I think they were, I don't remember.
They spent, only took your town. Yeah.
Okay, I think, what, what, now that we're all of them, we voted.
Yeah.
And we cleared.
So, I don't know. I don't know that it came to the planning division, but.
Okay.
So, I mean, the use of the property is residential currently, but the zoning is commercial. So, therefore, the residents on there, as this right now, are not performing uses.
I, I own there for sure, I have, um, the taxes and all that, it was residential, whenever it was zoned.
Right.
It was residential, and that's what I thought about it.
So, so how the property successor has been classified, there, like, for example, we have a restaurant in a, in a residential district. It's still be taxed at a commercial rate, but the zoning district is still going to be residential, if, if that makes sense, because meaning that, like, it exists, because, like, presumably that restaurant was established before, uh, before it was sold residential. But, but when it was sold residential, then the future development of that property needs to be residential.
Yeah, I wonder if we did it in a square.
Okay, so let me summarize this thing a little bit. It was commercial, when play started that.
He wants to go to the doctor's.
It was residential, that it was commercial when play started the doctor's office. And then when, uh, John shut it down, I guess you all bought it.
Yes.
And you're saying that it was converted back to an R1 or a residential.
Yes.
That's. So, can we confirm that?
It is, I, I can say that my taxes changed, that my taxes went back to residential. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure about what you gotta pay, but.
Right.
Um, because I had to pay the taxes, my body was our query when we brought it there, before it was changed. And if you're changed over, I had to pay just commercial taxes on it.
For part of the year or the whole year?
I think, I bought the first part of the year, so I had to pay the taxes for the whole year, because it had been closed up for seven years or longer, we said, but it still was commercial, so I had to pay the taxes on the commercial. And then it was changed over, I'm hearing, changed over, residential, a real big issue, been trying to live alone, and make a home, you know, pretty bad, being commercial or residential. So, um, when I got the home, instead of me, I made it, it was start to be from someone, and it was changed over to residential. Um, and as far as I knew, it was still residential. I did not know that it was, um, commercial, only on first up.
You're showing it to the big board.
I am, and, uh, so, when the doctor's office closed?
Like, 10 years back.
Oh, really?
At least, so the doctor passed away, and I was like, oh, my God, that's the worst.
Okay, I, I know for sure, if we voted on it, we cleared it, so what would it go after the overwhelming, the very, or all of them vote, what would it go there? Well, I know for sure, we changed it back.
Well, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I don't recall it actually coming to the planning division to change. I think that the requirement has, has to go to the planning division before the board votes. Voter vote, now, if it's been changed, we definitely voted, aren't we?
And I'm definitely saying, I mean, I'm paying a different taxes.
Your, your tax rate shows over.
My tax rate, yes, that's why, um, whatever, because I need to pay R2, so I'm going to change to R2. I'm like, when I talked to him, he said that, because I had more than my personal limit there, then I needed the R2 for residential, too, I guess. So, I was like, okay, so I'm thinking that, but, um, I really didn't, I mean, the taxes that I pay haven't been right, and, and, um, where else am I paying it? I'm just, haven't been right, they are residential, I don't have it with me, but.
If that change made R1, there'll be a resolution on ordinance, and I'll have to research and find if it was. But I think the fact of that is not, is whether it's R1 or B2.
Yeah.
She's wanting to change it to multifamily, because she has more than one family living. Our commercial code, and R1 says you can have multifamily in the structure. Well, she's wanting to change it to.
I get that, but we can't, if we don't know what to change it from, we can't approve changing it to. Does that make?
Yes.
And that would be working along.
No, 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 you're fine.
You said, you said it was two years ago?
That was about two years ago, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
If I'm not two year, I'll have to research and find.
We confirmed that, getting back on the agenda, if you like, um, here again, I'm just trying to make this, if we do something that's phrase for word of law in the ordinance, or in, in our position, it becomes a battle, that's that.
Well, we're here to do it the way they said, yeah, everybody come back.
So, and I, to agree with Mark, I mean, we can look and see if there's, are there zoning maps, maybe, that can show, but and also it's possible that if this map was adopted, like, if we adopted the zoning map as whole, it wasn't, when I was here, but if there was a map, and then on the map that was adopted as commercial, it would have became commercial at that point. Um, so, I, I don't know, um, I'm just, just.
I definitely, my, my really been changed, because I had to go to the South West to turn the paperwork in with him.
So, at least some people think you're resident.
Yeah, you know, the South West, and right, over here, that, like, they do, I'm, I'm.
I've had the commission, I don't want, I don't want us to, uh, make a motion and patch it, and then it become invalid, and in the future.
Totally, totally, I want to give a try, and I'll fight.
If, if we could, um, if you're okay, I'd like to look forward, and let us confirm, if our, if we just, if anyone can confirm.
Sir, I, I want to be, I'm, I, see, I don't want to be doing anything I'm not supposed to do, but I didn't understand difference in R1 and R2, I didn't know it was R2, so I'm educated.
That's on the map that's created in 2020, and if you're saying it's two years ago, it's changed, you just have to go there and tell them. I'll have to find it.
Well, and if we confirm that, then we can just keep looking forward for the moment we're talking about.
It would get you, if it was, for example, R1, and our records, I mean, should we update it? Um, that would get you, that would make the residence, it's no longer not a Florida, I mean, the multifamily would still be.
Yeah.
Um, still, still the R2, that make multifamily allow, but at least.
Well, that means confirming, you know, R1 and R2, or voting on it, or whatever the case is, right?
We can, we can check on that, and without a thing else, later, I'll look through all the, um, the text amendments. Um, but as far as Charles, who's in the TIS, usually is the one that does the map changes, so he may have, um, missing a version for us too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You agree with that? Good?
Yes, I'm agree with that.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is, uh, Mr. Lacy, request for a rezoning. Uh, the next item, again, is, uh, Mr. Lacey, request of a recreational vehicle for resident. Uh, anyone looking to drive?
This is, this is John. So the, um, so I, I'm not gonna, I'll let them speak to the situation of property. This is, um, the, my understanding is there's a recreational vehicle that's currently being used as residence. Not currently allowed in the ordinance. And, and that's where we are, so we're gonna have it. So I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll shoot you in the floor.
I was aware of meeting with this, I mean, my daughter-in-law was, uh, and said, which the research she did, that it was okay as long as it was level with the house. Of the front lawn property. Let me back up a little bit. The only reason for it done, it was not, at least your kid sacrificed everything. From his, I'm sorry, I'm going to be all bad. My head, my head's been a mess, part taken, half given. Why is she? He's like, just for better. Don't, I don't need somebody here. I don't disability. My kids gave up everything to help us financially, physically, know where to clean the house. Do laundry, man, murder, they did this for us. Otherwise, we're gonna lose everything we worked up to all. We've been out here for almost twenty eight years. And we thought we would do right because when they put it on the lot, like you said, it was level with the house. And they were, they could, I don't know what it's called, the fence, but they had it over there, put them like our fence to walk it. I talked to all my neighbors, I let them know what's going on. They were cool about it and I thought we did right until I got the zoning thing. I would catch two, two. They gave up everything. If they're not there, I'm gonna lose everything I have. My house, I worked for mine and everything, because I can't do it. Um, and we're fighting, so it's straight, we're fighting, it's a nightmare. And he could've gone tomorrow, he might be there six months, he might live there a year, I don't know. And he's, he's, he's only at forty two at the heart, that's it. He said, see, he did, he had arterial disease, I mean, what is it, I don't know, I don't know, by the sound. I don't know what to do at this point. And we got this on me, but, um. Sorry.
Um, we came here today to ask that you guys would allow us to be accepted to the, in order for us to continue to be there for my homes. Continue to reside in the RV that is part of the sign. I'm very sure that there was some, you know, solid orders that say that if you were putting something else on the same property, it shouldn't go past front lawn and front houses. So they should, when we're putting the RV there, it doesn't hurt your pass from, from your house, like, please.
Is this a motive, Mr. Harvey?
Uh, yes, well, well, I don't know.
So my question, um, Will is.
Yes, sir.
Would that have been allowed in the current regulations, but not allowed in the new regulations that we're fixing to adopt?
Uh, no, the, the zoning ordinance, the regulations on the individual subdivision regulations. This would be subdivision of zoning ordinance, which, um, has to be the practice of Brighton for several years to not allow permanent residences in a RV or a recreational vehicle unless that RV is in R three district in a mobile home park. It's the only place where that RV is used to be in the town of Brighton.
And when you said permanent, is that the?
Uh. I, I don't think there's a specific definition for the word permanent. Uh, the, uh, yes, there's no provisions, I mean, there's no provisions for temporary dwellings or, or even temporary in zoning.
And the reason I, I bring that up is because in this same subdivision, uh, and I'm sure many others, a lot of, uh, our residents will park their RV, picture their house. Yeah, I say park.
Well, yeah, it's always R I P, say, in a, in a, in a, and I think this might answer what you're saying. Some of the ordinance says you only allow one principal residence on these law.
Correct.
And this instance, there's a, a black one, a wire fence, a, a, a wall, iron fence, a boundary, permanent wood steps and a deck. It's attached to all the utilities to the primary structure. So it's, it's not like you're sitting in a driveway. I've explained to you, I've got a RV myself, I keep the plug into the electrical to keep my system on.
Right.
But this one's hooked to the sewer, it's hooked to the water, it's hooked to electricity. It's got a permanent fluid deck on the front and it's got the fence around it. That's what makes it a violation of the zoning laws.
I'm sorry, the fencing is like chicken wire, talking about.
Well, yeah, okay.
The chicken wire is for.
The food fencing part.
Yeah, unfortunately. Um, the sewer is open, so we do utilize the black things of the RV and we have to, as needed. Um, the water is connected with any hose. And so we have to have electricity come out and water come plug that will serve the water and air charge of the RV. Um, or to plug, to the house utilities. Um, and the, the steps on the side, it's just, it's just one of the stairs.
My biggest concern with it is just the safety aspect of it. I don't know which RVs we have lived in and which ones not. Like, if we have, I'm a fire department expert, if we go to a mobile home, we almost can say, hey, there's people in there. Where, I mean, it's just in the driveway, we gotta look at it. Is it vacant or is there somebody in there at the top? That, that's what really concerns me. And if something does happen, is it gonna endanger the other structures on the property that you're gonna have there?
There is about ten feet of space, um, uh, where they sit us. Uh, between the house and RV and the door in the driveway. We are at the side door. And it is, uh, very apparent, it is, namely, just like he was able to tell.
I don't know what you're saying, it, it certainly has a right or a duty.
Yeah. It'd be a lot of effort over there.
So, I, I mean, I've seen, I've taken pictures of it, but I'm saying.
We tried to make it as reasonable as we can. Um, like Sharon's saying, we are doing everything around the house, it's all made of leather. So we tried to keep up the R four doors for the neighborhood as well. Um, we heard that's a, we were planning to put, that's kind of like, to make it more exciting from the other side. Um, and that was, again.
Could, could you say something about, uh, did you guys?
Yeah, I was gonna pause your question.
And that next time we, uh, again, we definitely, I hope we get that out if we are, a lot of things need to.
So, I mean, I can, I guess, uh, the, the thought process would be if we were, if we were to explore regulations that would allow a residential, a permanent residential in an RV in, in, uh, as accessory to a per, get rid of the one principal dwelling, one principal dwelling per life, we could get rid of that. Allow for, and allow for a secondary residence to be a RV. We can change that into rules. Right now, it won't stop allowed. Uh, but then we have to consider, everybody in Brighton has the potential to have an RV warrant in, uh, in their city, in, in their, under property. So that's, that's what we have to think about as a town.
Um, I was under the impression that I was thinking, we were giving the option to come in the front of the building. Was, we were, I said, announcing for the rules to change for a few exceptions for the rule because of the situation.
So, uh, Will, that, that basic question. In our ordinances, do we allow for exception?
Uh, no. In, in my professional opinion, it does not.
Good.
I would think it would be, uh. I, I don't, I don't would say you can't allow for exception. I don't know what legal reason that exception would be based in. I'll put it that way.
Good.
And I think three town attorneys here, then probably anybody.
Okay. Any other comment?
I think, now, uh, I have a friend who is a cattle commissioner for different health. Um, he's in June now. And he helped me to sleep over there, um, and he's been having, as well as my friend, I'm not sure about this, it's a big door mark. Won't put it down. But he, it's like a split team study that just, and I wanted to do it. And he, so that, and well, he is someone, he was the one that's standing there, I know that's informed, but, um, like, he's never, he's done it himself.
Uh, Bill, the cattle commissioner actually flies, either here, it's on the, the Brighton city limits, again, Brighton city limits. Uh, but, uh. If there were legal precedents for us to do that, then we had something we could execute a decision on. Current, I understand. We don't have the ability to, to make that change. We imagine, Will, that we have the opportunity or the ability to make an exception to a rule. She think it was to say two years. And then, you know, based on what you were, you were saying earlier, uh, you don't know how, right? So.
It's a few.
Uh, I understand. Uh, but we still have to have some legal precedence or, or guideline to go by.
What if, what if we need something like, uh, you've been on a certain amount of time to rectify?
I think that's the situation that we're looking at, as a zoning violation would be, you know, the, if we went to city court for, for, I don't know, the, the process, they, they went to municipal court, that would be, that would, that would be between.
Specify a, a city, a number of months or whatever to, to rectify the situation?
I see.
Specify a number of months.
Right, 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 right. Right. Well, what are you saying, uh, of this day? Would that be a problem? What, what would you say?
I, I don't think that, I don't think that is a problem. I'm just saying that as a zoning violation, if we went to city court, then the judge could, at that point, say, you got so many days to rectify the situation or, or not. Um, I don't, um, I don't look the pain, we should have that though.
Okay. Now, that was my point, I don't think we have to, we don't have to, to make that, that adjustment. However, if it's a legal, a legal violation, then that would follow to your part, uh, your.
Well, the zoning and codes, uh, this is a zoning issue, this is.
Well, I get it, but the zone exists and that becomes a code making, making regulations or not making regulations?
It still falls on the zoning laws for the one principal residence only allowed. So you have a code, the, the, the property name code, the codes don't specifically cover it. It is, this following the zoning laws, court allows only one principal structure. It can't be, um, permanent in stature, things along those lines. What, where this following? I, I, I may be in some technical setting, but.
Right.
It doesn't, it doesn't follow any municipal code like Calvarez or something that I have. This is more so the fact that our zoning law says in that residential district, you're only allowed one primary residence. That's, that's the matter of the, the reason I got the warning.
Okay. And at this point, we don't believe we have it, that we can.
We, we could, uh, we could, uh, like I was talking about crafting regulations to, to allow.
Then we would have to do it for everyone.
You'd have to do it for everyone. There's, there's no way to allow a special exception.
I was told, I was told that they originally said they can't, but y'all couldn't make exceptions. That it was up to y'all or whoever falls under, it basically come back, see where he is and you're come back, see how he is at that point.
Well, I don't, and, and that's my point. I don't know a method or a tact, though, that's like, right.
What she maybe refers to the board of zoning fields, where they can place a, a human decision? And then they can allow what's called a huge on the field? Or they can say, no, we don't.
Well, that may, that may, that may be valid.
I mean, there's not, I, I, I'm totally confused this morning. There's not a thing to like, y'all, you know, as well as I do. There are people out there, look like Saint Chris, you know? And my, I'm not trying to be funny, but, you know, when you done it, we're clean. There are people out there, other people living in there. It's just not quite, for getting like he said, his office. We, when we contacted, when I contacted him, he said it was blatantly obvious, I'm getting the fence and stairs. Well, even I, I already sit them there and I'm using it as my bathroom or whatever. I would physically could not walk up those little bit of stairs for kids and me. You know, I'm just, you know, they're, they're rad, but.
I think my answer to that, the fact that there's a sewage system, there's a special line of water and water. I understand you're saying that steps, but the totality of circumstances, not only in addition to the permanent steps, if we have access, this only infrastructure as well.
Well, I think you're saying, or that, uh, make sure I'm getting this right. At this point, this convention does not have a path to move forward. However, the board of zoning appeals might.
I, I mean, would I, if this is in front of the board of zoning appeals, asking for a special exception? And I was to say a letter at that U C A meeting, I, um, I don't know what grounds U C A would have at that point. Uh, I'm really too, I mean, uh, because it could be the same, um, consistency thing. If he's, one, one person has a, a hard case. And therefore, another person just wants to rent out a floor or somebody. How do you, as the board of zoning appeals, say, well, one was, uh, an economic hardship and one wasn't?
Right.
I, I don't know how the board of zoning appeals make a decision. I'm not saying, I, I've seen some board of zoning appeals decisions that are, that are questionable, I will say that, but, um.
But one of the things that we could try and do is make sure we're following established ordinances in law. And, and quite honestly, that wasn't always done fast. Which is one of the things we're trying, we have been trying to establish, uh, a consistent, um, next future plan. Uh, my recommendation is, is we could do some research on this. Uh, there is a board of zoning, zoning board of the field, uh, in Brighton that this could be brought forward. But I really recommend we do a little more research before we make a decision. If we don't have the ability to make that decision, it's just like with, you're, you're zoning on, on, you know, the doctor's house. If we don't have the ability to do it, it's not valid. If we don't have the ability to do it, it's not valid. So.
So if we wait for research to be done, are we extending the period for us to continue living there? Because the original ordinance that was made since the last thirty days. And we're going to start taking action, that is extended until there's a decision made.
We can't wait, I think that's what should happen.
Does it extend until thirty days or whatever?
It was very nice to even initiate a time limit for when I filed to come before the board. I thought we would continue doing what we're doing. But someone recommended to the board, because if the board, if I could just keep, like, give this a rule that, that you keep doing it, then it would be important. But if they can't, I think it's reasonable to give it a definitive answer.
And the basic issue is the fact that it, it establishes more or less of the permanent installation. If it were not established as a permanent installation, it'd be part of an RV.
So if we remove the permanent steps and the facts?
I don't think you have to remove that.
So if the regulation that we can remove the permanent steps?
I mean.
Stats and infrastructure, what they support.
Well, stats and infrastructure, which is water, like a sewer. Uh, and, uh, just like, I've done it before, I ain't already. I was, I ain't playing, thank you, I, I don't look like much of it. And then I, I look.
Like, yeah, I'm, I'm sure, yeah, it's not like part of the case is.
Well, it's an established connection that stays there all the time?
No, it's not, no. The only thing that works in the house is the RV is the electric and the water. And you have houses that we store when they're burning out and we did, and as soon as they're dead, we pull those things back out. So why closes this one? That's not, that's the one. You got home and then you're, it's like, it's not attached, but.
However, we plan to, over two, that time, is to. Keep the water source free.
Yeah, that, this is the electric waters. So when it's going through, then we got water, water first. So in the electric waters, I mean, we bring additional outlet from the original, one of the canister holes to run the RV. And then, but that was just, and other parts of plumbing the water, that the sewage just happens to end up.
That you're consistently running power through that, essentially doing an extension well.
No, it's not a special part, we wired, like, we had.
It's wired into a heater and everything?
It's wired to the electric box. Uh, so we had, electric box is another one.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's only the infrastructure department. Water, heat, water, we, I've done that, I've done that.
So the. Existed channel in order.
That's right.
The water, and it's still the power that's running.
So there's a plug, it's just an outlet, we get all of it.
So it's, it is an extension pool, that's.
It has a wire.
Yeah, essentially, yeah, a nose hat.
So we had an electrician. And they gave out, the breaker box is, the breaker box is kind of a problem. And they definitely had, they bought, the actual, they bought, and they put some power from the exit pool. Those, those, those RVs, so it's safe. And it's the problem now, or the proper installation is to continue.
We had, we had two sharks installed as well.
Yeah, that's the thing. Here again, there's, there's never been a problem if you got authorized, uh, a set to pull the outside of your house to be able to plug an RV on.
Right.
But if, based on what I'm seeing, the, the, wiring to the RV is, it's a, an RV plug, it was very under correction.
Yeah, yeah.
It was very partial.
I get it, I get it. We're all over the phone. So. Well, I can tell, I should make sure we go through all, all the conversation. We have a. Technically permanently install RV on property in a residential zone that does not allow. Did I correct or did I?
Sorry, sorry.
We got a, we got a, but again, RV technically permanently installed in, in a zone that does not allow for that to be a secondary dwelling or property. Correct, it's only allowed one principal?
One principal, yes.
Is there any desire among the county vision or citizens of Brighton to change the one principal per?
No.
I, I wouldn't think so, but I, that, that would be.
That would be another question.
I'm sorry?
That's a much broader.
Right, well, e- exactly. And if that would be the, the fix for this.
At this level?
Yes. Would be the, somehow to allow for RVs to be a secondary residence.
The violation is because it's permanent. Okay, so, and that would be the citation.
What was the one?
One question. So making it not permanent eliminates that issue. Come on. Butter babe, then? So that would move fix, fix.
I think what I told Miss, uh, Miss Sherry, I wrote, or maybe you, a lot of section, I was talking about, we got them on the phone. I've seen other RVs parking drop guys, and they're doing just park later with the power plugged in, or they're showing a lot of, sort of, one night or something. But adding to the, it doesn't show the permanent, it just has all these facilities, steps, that. So I guess the short answer to your question is, if it wasn't hooked up, all that stuff, it didn't have the permanent steps, like a house would have, and then it would look like our apartment side.
Well, like I said, I thought the same thing. I put it in my driveway, I looked at the water and the electric and, and dragged the patch and so forth, but it didn't stay that way. So, I think.
So that's wrong, it's just my RV parked on the side of the house.
The fact that it's there is not a problem. Does that make sense? I mean, at this point, I don't know if we have anything to even make a motion for.
So if we want to, we have this as a comment, what would that exception, if we want to do, we make it right, it's like, uh, this, then, then we should, there was.
Yeah, we have, we have.
The best is, well, there may not change it. Well, there, there are two paths forward, as I understand. One is we have to change the R one, which is residential zoning regulations to allow that. And, uh, that was the question that we have, we're not interested in changing R one for the entire land zone, okay? The next is, I understand, is potentially bringing to the board of zoning fields and ask for an exemption for a whatever. Those are the two paths I, I see. Well, third, the first path is to make it non-permanent, parking and RV in New York. The second would be to go to the, what, board of zoning fields, and there's no guarantee at that point that it'll be changed to be any.
I do.
I mean, so I tell you, you're covering that difference, I mean.
So the state's a goal, and kids is down.
That's, I don't think you have to worry about. You said stick a wire.
Yeah.
It's not a battery wall.
More than just like, um, kind of, yeah.
It is, it's the infrastructure.
No, I mean, we're just, I, I don't know, it's not where the kids is taking.
Take them.
I don't, I, I don't know, I just know it's like.
So there's, uh, those steps, and this is how we do it.
At that point, it's your part. So if it were me, I personally had sense that I could move in and out, just because I don't like to lower RVs. But as, as far as the power goes, would we be able to leave the power hooked up? You know, if people are married or, you, you have. I, I don't know if that's the issue.
So the water, basically.
R two.
And so as soon as that, well, please, like I said, it's part of it, and he is, that we care, we, we want there. So if anyone were doing a series, it's.
It's the way you get the power, then make the power permanent.
So they're unburied or something?
Unburied, uh, I mean, I can't, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not telling you the question, but I can't, I can't tell you all of it. There's more to tell you all of it. But that's the current situation, is it's considered a permanent installation in, in a zone that does not allow to permanent installation.
I'm sorry.
Anything else we?
So, just a little commentary, so that's, that would be to, if we want to do something, we have.
I, I would, I would shortly refer you to looking at the letter and see what, which is there to play out anybody in that letter, in the residential. That would be the letter, if you guess, yeah. Okay. You put ready, it goes, go, agents. Thank God it was the large clerk, it's short term rental, Airbnb, neighbor's wedding, the three twenty, he's flooding all of it. You better right now.
So.
This is the power, though?
All right, I mean, I do. So, why are you referring to, uh, short term rental, Airbnb, you would, as I understand, you said operating an Airbnb? I should know that Airbnb is a brand name, uh, the current state. The state law uses, uh, it's called short term rental units. Uh, if, if everybody likes that Airbnb, call it that, doesn't know what that is. Uh, but right now, our regulations, the only place we ever see is between Airbnb or a hotel. There's just commercial activity that's always up there. We allow charity pieces in our P two districts, uh, but we don't allow them in the residential districts. So, so now, this is a, I would say this is a current industry. Uh, this is something that more people are looking to do. And therefore, towns are considering adopting, um, Airbnb regulations. And so that's, uh, something for us to consider. I put, these regulations were adopted by community city Tennessee, the ones that are in your agenda. They, uh, they allow for, like, there's two different types of Airbnb, so for, it's one is under occupied. And one is, uh, uh, just for the whole, for the whole house or whatever is available. These require under occupied and, uh, and they, they also allow for access for building, if you've got another house. Uh, like a garage or something, you want to establish a, a small apartment or something, that garage is going to allow, uh, that to, for, for commercial use. Uh, right now, the property it's owned, R one, I believe, right? R one and, so I mean, and it's at an intersection, we could consider re-zoning it to commercial. Which therefore, would be Airbnb regulations, you can just have, uh, you can just have any. But therefore, within her home would be a, become an informal use. It would be, it would be allowed in the, uh, in the, in that district, so.
Is, is this your house? Third one?
Yes.
Is it the one four? No, okay.
My Airbnb is located on the, and it's above that, I don't think it.
Well, I'm driving by quite all pissed off. So you're, it's technically, so the three twenty is the garage entrance or is the entire property?
It's the entire property entrance.
Okay.
My opinion is, one, before I even opened in September twenty two, I got down there and walked to the court. And that was my first step, was ask if I did this before I started, you know, started. And then marks and definitely I'm not paying for this, I just want to make it real.
The zoning board specifically says you can't have human occupation in a detached structure. And that's exactly what this is, and I got to him, this my partner, I don't know why she could tell that, because Cory was here when that zoning ordinance was passed. I said, angle of argument. Uh, it specifically says in all the districts, you cannot really have human occupation in a detached structure. So it's. And good thing that you needed a detached structure. So a good thing she did what she felt she did, but then. Who came to my text and now sent her a, a letter saying, you know, you're, you're not allowed.
Right. So now, then the, uh, as I understand what Willie's saying, we have the option or the consideration of adopting a, uh. maturity district, short term rental unit, residential transient rental unit, flat Airbnb, private land. Adjustment to R one, right?
And so it would just create opportunities for vacation rentals, apart, Airbnb's to.
So how would that be different if I, uh, called another residence in, in the area and just rented it out as a Airbnb?
Uh, the regulations are presented for you, uh, they'll allow that, but you can craft regulations to allow that if you wanted to. If you wanted there to be, if you have another home in the county right, and you wanted to list it as an Airbnb, uh.
Because it's commercial operation at that point as opposed to a fixed residential property.
Our, so it considers that a commercial use at that point. Uh, but the, so you can create regulations in the R one district to allow, allow that. Now, these regulations require the owner to be on site.
The ones you had another here?
The ones there in front of you require, they require owner occupation, the owner to be on site. The, uh, but that doesn't have to be the regulations. So it's just for us to determine how we, do we wish to go forward with Airbnb regulations. That's, that's right, that would not allow it to happen right. Only at, or, I mean, any type of transient living would require a personal business.
Current.
Currently. So.
And, uh, and because this is a detached building, that expands the, the government. As opposed to just using your house as Airbnb or BRD or whatever it's called.
My understanding, when these crafted in the new cities, they wanted to have a secondary unit available for, uh, an Airbnb. So, like, if someone who lives, they live in a house, they got a garage or, or pool house or something on property. And they want to rip that out to, by the weekend, by the week, whatever.
No cases, right.
Uh, such as commercial taxes and all that stuff, the, um, they, they could do that. So, some towns, they were subject to taxes, but weren't paid. Oh, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Well, well, what I mean is, it's a, it's a commercial transaction as opposed to just, uh, someone paying.
It's a major adjustment to, to current regulations. As in, it's a period of justice, they hold it in here. Uh, that would re-zon the property for.
No.
Just allow for the transient relative.
This is language that could be considered for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, admitting the text of the zoning ordinance.
There again, somebody could go and build a second garage on the ground and get it sanitized.
Mm-hmm.
So it would potentially involve all of the town.
Well, they, they have to, the plans and hoping to improve. Are, and there are also, there's some regulations, I mean, copy that to her. Uh, so, but there's, there's things about like, it might be so much business between, between that and the other one. Uh, there's ways where it's, and they have to, I don't remember if these require a four time appeals. Yeah, so this requires a site management of the four time appeals. Therefore, it'd be, I mean, you, an Airbnb would be, you should put it on appeal in the R one district. No one would be able to establish one unless there's a four time appeals first. And the four time appeals would review their request in compliance with these regulations that you've adopted. That you would see board have adopted.
So, so that means, A, we have to, as a, as a planning mission, don't, uh, we have to. At some point maybe a recommendation or emotion that we can, that we adopt some sort of transient rental unit provision. Under the R one zone, right?
Right.
And then the second step is that then that property, individual property, which is involved in four times field to be individually purchased.
Yes.
So the process to adopt a, uh, transient rental unit, residential transient rental unit. Uh, adjustment is, what is it?
It requires, uh, I would present a text amendment to the board and I would, I, I would recommend it if I see tonight. Other, just because you're seeing it for the first time.
Right.
Tonight, you might want to take the time to look at the regulations if you want to take time to look at the regulations. Uh, and, and, and if you might have some suggestions as well. And then present a text amendment to the planning commission. Planning commission would make a recommendation to the board of mayor and all of them, and then those regulations will be adopted. Assuming the board of mayor and all of them adopted.
Right.
And then after they're on the books, now where I talked about the BGA before about their, right, there's still being inconsistent. There's no, there, there's not a risk there because they're acting, here's the rules. You either, these are rules you gotta comply with, uh, do they meet or not? Can you comply with them or not? If they can't comply with them, then we will approve the Airbnb at that location. The four time appeals.
So then the final, uh, arbitration on that is the board of zoning.
Yes.
Some of the boards.
Have we, have you, we've done any whole occupation requests, recent, any recent time? Very, very similar process. If someone like is running like a, uh, an accounting, just a sounder house or whatever. Uh, that would go to the four time appeals.
We talked about it two, three years ago, but, you know, the government would never put it through.
Okay, the mayor has one, Commissioner Clark has said, so.
We discussed it in general terms.
Yeah.
But you know, I'm sure the question will prove.
Good question on, uh, our, our D and D. If you have one that's on North Main and is right in the area for the, for the grocery store, would you, you see? That also, was he also filing in the head there?
I sent him a letter because that's not a district with restricted commercial. And it doesn't allow the transient lodging according to our unimulings. And the restricted commercial district is where that is one on one, I'm sure. I sent him a letter, but it's a company in another state and I still don't know what response.
And there's also, I mean, pull up the right number D D's, there is one on Bryan's Little School, get a seat, is that possible?
And.
Why would you do that?
That's gonna be full of Airbnb, the problem is.
Okay, so what's your recommendation if we consider to go back and, and I guess do all those things? Re-do this a little more, but any, some of those regulations to go along with it. Right. Well, it's, 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 uh.
Yeah. And so, and, and it's not my position that the town needs Airbnb regulations or short term rental regulations. That's, that's not for me to say this is your town, uh, in, uh, but if you, if, I will say that. We're going to get more requests in the future.
Well, and so there were. Guidelines in place, we can, therefore those guidelines draw a run.
Therefore, like, and they're, they're good guidelines, like they're from all practical appearances. If you follow these guidelines, your neighbor would never know there was an Airbnb there unless, I think I said just no.
Those go by.
Cause that's what it's supposed to, uh, that's, that's the idea it's supposed to have, allow for them, but reserve, but preserve the residential character of the neighborhood. Uh, it's still, we don't want to change the character of the neighborhood, it's still the residential neighborhood, but we. But it gives sort of a window of opportunity for, or an avenue for someone to do something like that.
I would recommend that we, we, uh, take the recommendation and consider the, consider the test that once we've had more powerful to be dealt with.
Sure.
Uh, I don't know what that tells you right now. But I, I think it's an idea for us to take away the meeting, so.
Yeah, we don't want to have with commercial business. And I don't want to see Mr. Parker cheating and brought us up and we talked about her and her property in P two. I would say no, because if, if God forbid we got a tornado and they tore our house down, according to the regulations, she didn't build a house back because it's not for use. So I would strongly say, I told Mr. Parker this was cheap, I made it in the office. I wouldn't do a P two round, just because that's our primary residence. So if we could find the habitating.
Would she regret it early Airbnb while the house was?
She obviously cheated.
Sorry, that was probably the wrong word.
So the thing to say is that our current rule that says that you can't have habitation in a structure. If there was some textual language like, which Reverend said, could allow for that, then it would.
Right. So it's not just, it's not just using a, a residence or home as an Airbnb. How to, how to have a separate or detached structure as an Airbnb. So it's also something that has to be considered in the.
That's, that's the only great about two, I mean.
Okay, fine. What can we do on this?
So, so I, I can, and A D type of system, that's a text amendment. Get, uh, get orders formed, give the, fully get the pass orders to, to Minnesota works without a recommendation. So that's a little bit of a go. Uh, well, maybe good, but we also good if you wanted to, like, next meeting. When we have more time and I have the agenda, I guess, uh, actually get to the leads and regulations and look if we like and feel like, uh, we could have a meeting before we do that too. So it's, uh.
Okay.
So.
Cool. All right, I guess we're moving on then, right? Item D is, uh, Chris and Oliver, and that Wyatt, Ken of all, annexation request, Old Dennis Road, parcel four, national ninety eight.
So Mr. Tim Wyatt's here, uh, with, uh, representing the owners. Uh, if you, you have a annexation request for a property and open this road this morning, I put five acres. Uh, leaders parcel four on, including the county tax, that nine eighty.
Private use.
And.
Private use.
It is.
Can you copy that? You got the copies? It's on YouTube, Brighton Post.
And it's property.
Brighton Post channel.
Have, have you, they have requests from the property owner, which we have, we have received that as a town request from the property owner to be annexed. And it also has to be inside the urban growth boundary of the property. I've been, I have a county planner, trying to compare our maps to make sure that this isn't that, yes, inside our remote ground, we can annex this by ordinance. Uh, just like we did the U C Kelly, Macy's annexation, the exact same process. The only difference, I mean, that is, uh, we annexed that church to make it contiguous to the city. This property would not be contiguous to the city limits. And so therefore, I've emailed the attorney in task yesterday and she got back with us today about not, he was vexing. He, and the annexed property was not, and not contiguous to the city limits. Uh, you require a formation of the county on the planter surface. So therefore, like the roads are in a clean, there's a certain kind of maintenance agreement that needs to be in place. And it can't make this agreement, maybe the county, who is at all still, uh, but we don't know the answer to that yet. And therefore I, I told Mr. Wyatt, I'm not ready, I don't have all the information to add to the draft of the planter service. To see what this annexation just did. So.
Where, where, oh, where all that is, is the property at?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, do you, mm, you're coming out of Woodlong on the back side?
Off, off what?
Off wild. If you turn, off wild, you would turn left, going back to Woodlong. Okay? And you go up that hill there and it kind of peaks.
Right.
That's the, right behind those houses that are there.
Right.
On the right hand side of the road, uh, at that last house is where that, that wheat field starts. And that's, that's forty six acres.
Okay, so it's, it's on, like I said, it's on each side of Old Dennis.
Correct. And there, there is a house that kind of sit, because of the road frontage there, it's almost like a U shape now because there's a house that sits in the middle. And the farm is on each side of the house, as far as, as far as road frontage is concerned.
Does that property go pretty much around the old London school?
Goes behind the London school and over towards the church that's there. In the cemetery.
Oh, that's a low, that's a low so far.
See that house?
So. And so say all of us, allowing for not to do a sanitation, it's just, there's some extra steps we have to cover. For not to do sanitation, they don't have to if they're already in the city.
And that will be on you to develop that plan.
Okay, me and the, and your awesome staff and, and in coordination with the county, the county planning office.
So that's, uh, is that inside the parking lot?
Yes.
Yes. So between bleach, utility.
City bleach don't cover that, but fire does, because ours goes all the way out to sun side and not harm.
But if it became that extra, the city would, would be.
Correct.
Okay. And then, uh, then you're looking at, uh, utility access.
Right.
Uh, depending on what came forward as something big, the plan or whatever we can.
And we would want to, uh. I, I would kind of see how difficult it would, if, 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 I don't know, would utilities arrive into it right now? I really don't, uh, it's, it's, uh.
Right now everything it services that is Southwest Electric, water, gas, and public road water.
Fire hydrants almost right across the street from the one of that.
That's public road, all, all out there.
Really the only thing that would have to be added would be, uh, sewer, the, the availability for sewer when someone develops.
Most of the services are already there, it's just, like you said, my, so sewer.
I think gas is the one that's done.
Yeah, but it's water, gas, everything.
So that, I, I was, Wyatt was going to do it tonight, but I wasn't prepared to. Uh, we're not, we're not prepared to pursue it at this point. I think, I think it's, I think it's doable project, I think it's, um, I mean, obviously. You, you want, you want more development, and I believe that is certain, it's to hopefully my main development into a subdivision, but we want to develop it. Uh, for, for South City footing, all the, all, all the infrastructure and everything, we want it to be. Where it can be developed when they're ready to.
But right now you got some twelve or fifteen or so items that have to be addressed based on the Ted C. Um, co-annated, right?
Right.
And are we looking at thirty days, ninety days? I mean, this is, officers don't have to be dealing with one item at a time.
I, I, I feel like most of the planter service, you know, police ser, police service would be extended if they wanted to station, um, sanitation routes, if there's, you know, they, they may have to look at it to reroute. Something I know of there, trash, I don't know trash, it depends on my level there or not, um, so the, that's, um, that's all the bridge you'd have to do. And we'd have to, and you know what, we, the other planter service is that's inactive. If you say something on the planter service, you say the city should provide, uh, full sea, sewers, full ser, sewer services. Uh, within two years of annexation, and the city doesn't follow through on that, then we're default on the planter service. So therefore we don't want to say anything on the planter service that we're not willing to do.
We're paying for it.
Or we can't pay for it, so.
Okay. So did we just put something else forward?
I think the long term intent is, it is farmland today.
Right. I've gone past the button.
Sir.
I've gone right past it, the whole button.
Yeah, it's farmland today. There has been some off record interest by potential developers to develop that property. Or similar property in the area. And this is, but their concern is, as a developer, is they want the property to be annexed into a city. Before they in turn become the developer. In other words, the current owner doing the heavy lifting, I guess is the way I would say that. We wanting to have services for sewer and things such as that is not the intent.
Right.
We being the current property owner, which one of them is my wife.
Are you a little teddy bear?
Yes, every day. One of the things I might correct the record is, it is not Tina Hall, it is Tina Hill.
That would be why I'd record that out before you.
So that's pretty much the intent of trying to have it annexed into the city, is for the potential use down the road.
I mean, I hope we can. Record bill here, I mean, whether the next few months, if there's some months, I think, you know, like.
Right, what, what, what you, your record did, man, was that it?
If, if, if we could have an, a up and down approval, say within the next ninety days, you know, something like that. Or, 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 you know, hundred and twenty day.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting with, um.
Walking through the process.
Yeah, uh, and I heard back from the county planner, does that either, or you know, uh, I told Old Dennis Road at that point, it was a county road, it was state made. So, uh. Okay, so, um, he'll probably have to go to people, I guess, uh, do we want to? And, and Brian would have to go too, um, do we want to, we want to make these city roads go into it? Or we, we want the city to assume the maintenance or is the county going to be willing to, uh, keep doing the maintenance? It's those, those things have been negotiated.
Right.
So.
I would assume that those things are negotiated with the cost going on the development.
Yes. Well.
Every part.
You said the things that negotiate this supply with the cost.
So if you're extending sewage from existing city, property is non-contiguous. Then developing the property, I would assume you're paying for that.
You would do it even if it was continuous too, if you just add into the line, right, to get.
Oh, we pay it?
Yeah. I don't think anything would change in that.
Okay, go for it. So, so it's a matter of, uh. If the sewer line is not there and the sewer line's got to be extended, our planter service may say that. He may say, you know, the, the nearest sewer, the nearest sewer is X number of feet away. And will be extended in a, you know.
Right.
Um, acid element in purpose, uh, we could do that.
Okay.
So sometimes. Yes, we don't know what's happening.
So I guess this is back on you now?
Okay.
Next item, uh, resolution to re-adopt Brighton Municipal Subdivision Regulations. And that is. And that is, if I'm reading this right, resolution zero two two seven two oh two four dash two.
Those, those C D E required, which is something that one for the Matoka has.
Well, this is what we've been discussing for quite a while.
Uh, I, I mean, I haven't had enough of the thing that I've had recently. Like, see, the, the cluster box unit, the metal box units, that's, that's something they've added recently, uh, sod requirements for ocean patrol, uh, a few of, uh, new subdivisions that need sod.
Is there a sir?
I'm sorry.
Hold the paper. All right. You can load. Hold the bag.
For developers, if they want to see Brighton subdivision regulations now, I mean, the, the future, we've got subdivision regulations to share with them.
Just make sure they're in a good PDF format.
Yes.
Any other business? Can we match the mother with your chair?
I have to be here.
Hold the paper.
Hi.
Good night.
Pretty good night.
Is that beautiful? All right, that's a good one.
Yeah, I made some emails the other day. Is there a fire?
I hope so.
I had a double, I mean, I had a, for, for more, like, for the double, it's in the same building, it's, it did the battle, you know, the truck for land and all that. That wasn't, that wasn't anywhere in one of these, we were just.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think it'd be more often, or.
Oh, wow. I thought it was, it's like, um, worst.
He had to check, he had to, he was going to call, and I had it stopped.
Someplace to go with lunch, so. Thank you so much.
But, yeah.
You're ready? You're ready for the man?
Really? I got three emails the other day, but I don't know what else I'm talking about. Well, that goes back to the servants, if you're, like, one time, I'm out south, using the servant, now she says A D P or, or whatever.
Yes, and.
Where's the girl at?
She's at, you didn't know? She's been happy.
Yes, it's, are you all up? Yes. I speak, but now, I got one girl that's left, two girls left, that is, see.
It's a player. Who's actually, they knew. Then they, so it's again, I'll have to carry it over to our, still capture, and they agreed to do the chair. Okay. She's supposed.
I was just, is everyone talking? Yes, well, you're proud of them.
And all the, they, they're.
Yeah.
Look, I'm showing all of them, they're good, really?
So.
You don't have a sub?
Oh, okay.
Oh, this was the D K was coming to, that boss was.
Had a double number on it.
No, I didn't.